Alright, we'll call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the flag, on the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So to start the meeting, we're gonna have the public hearing for the fireworks. Permit application, however you wanna call it here, for the proposed fireworks business. So now would be the time for anybody in the public that has questions, concerns, to share those. If there is anybody. Okay, and we'd also give time for both of you to share anything that you haven't already, I don't know.
Yeah, we're just looking forward to going over this with the board and seeing what is gonna stay and what isn't. We're glad that there's not a bunch of people standing in the back of the room.
So there is no public comment on the proposal. Questions or concerns from the board? I know we looked at a draft of a permit application. Or questions in general, go ahead.
Where are you at? I mean, are you still where you were before at the last time we talked?
Uh, as far as location wise?
Location or just the whole process?
Yeah, we're just, we are where we've been, uh, since we've been in front of you, we've all, we've been in front of the rest of the board also. I just, not to just have all our eggs in one basket, just, uh, who knows what the, was gonna come out, we're hoping for Fairhaven. But, uh, you know, we don't wanna be stuck either without anywhere else. So we're really hoping that, uh, to me, that's a very positive sign if the town's not, if it was given notice to Amanda, there's not a big upset about us. Possibly moving here, so hopefully that's positive for you guys.
Other questions?
Don't have a question, more of a comment, even though I'm, I don't see people in the room here. I'm still a little concerned that when it got some traction on Facebook, it was about fifty percent for, fifty percent against. So I don't want the fact that no one's in here, if we take that to be as an overwhelming.
Oh, no, it just means the passionate ones aren't here.
It means, it means, I don't know, I know I've had a couple of phone calls, I haven't had any that said, "I'm for it, let's put it in." I have had phone calls that said, "No, I'd like to pass." So we just.
I'd like to put it in, I'm a resident.
I know, I know, but I'm just, I'm just making sure that both sides.
Well, I think, I think it, once the public, if we're down here, once the public sees that we're not shooting them, we're only selling them. A lot of people get upset because they think we're gonna stake them all back and start shooting them off. That's not the way that, it's, it's a sales zone, it's in, uh, you know.
Well, we got big users in town, all the slate quarries use lots of fireworks.
Yeah. They use the real stuff.
Different.
Which they can't buy from these guys.
My only hard comment on that is I know that last time you were in here, uh, you had some questions about the permit fee of five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's still five thousand dollars and I'm still supporting the permit fee of five thousand dollars.
I would just ask, what other businesses pay a permit fee of five thousand dollars, ever? In town, in Fairhaven? Why, why is this business different? I'm just asking a question.
I can answer why I feel comfortable with five thousand dollars. The first year after you go in, there's gonna be a spike, I believe there's gonna be a spike usage of police presence and things that you have to work out. Similar to what you shared, you did a good job of sharing with us, that it was a little bumpy the first year before it settles down. So I would not be comfortable to putting the taxpayers, all of the extra coverage on that. So I, I still feel very strongly that five thousand dollars that I see in this permit should be there.
So are you saying it's a five thousand dollar annual fee or just a one-time fee?
Annual fee, come back next year and we'll see if we use it or not.
We can't do that, we can't, we can't do five thousand.
But that's.
That's our, I mean, that might as well, that's our problem, we'd be working for nothing. At least I don't know what you feel, but that's unlikely.
Yeah, I mean, I was pretty, and I appreciate your openness with this because I feel we were pretty open with the last one too. And, and I would, and I do agree with you on that, and that is why I mentioned that possibly something like a sales-related tax, I want an extra one percent, like other towns have done. I think is, is completely in range of something we could do because then it's, I don't know, we have no idea what the market is gonna be. We're hoping, I'm rolling the dice here, really, I had a great location. I'm in the wind now and I'm hoping that this is gonna turn out to be, but to throw that, that's more than I've ever even paid for rent anywhere. Almost for both locations, to be honest with you, so that would be a top of paying rent and then our insurance is, our insurance is almost that every year. Uh, it's, this isn't, uh, this.
This isn't a flea market.
No, it's, it's, it costs real money to do this, it costs real money for insurance to even cover this, because it does, it covers everybody that buys from us. It covers, uh, we have a lot, two million dollar liability insurance, it covers everybody. What I, what I understand, and I think, and I think, uh, that we would agree with you, the first year is always that. There's always people being reminded with the law, it's thinking, they see the sign open and it's free-for-all and the way that it is going right now in Vermont, that is not a free-for-all. Which, you know, we all understand, so, but I would feel comfortable in doing something like that. Or something far tamer, like, we do plan to donate a thousand dollars a year to the fire department because we do feel that it puts extra stress. More people will be asking for permits than normal because they see the signs, it's an enticement, so that's more that the fire chief is gonna have to look into, possibly signing or not signing. And we know that that's an extra headache, so that's why we do that every year and we hope that that thousand helps out the town. But to throw the five thousand out, just, I mean, that's, uh, we gotta, you know, this is a, this is a, uh, uh.
Well, Pittsburgh, actually Pittsburgh even charges for fifteen dollars for its permit. They're the only town that I know that does that.
Oh, that charges for the, the consumer.
For the consumer.
Got it, I got you.
So that would, that's another, you know.
And again, that's just my opinion, I have one, one opinion on this board, but I owe you that.
Thank you, I appreciate your honesty and whatever, we wanna open debate, because we don't want there to be a hidden thing that comes out and somebody secretly upset, we'd rather have it out.
Because this is my thought, you put a bit of money and you get everything over.
I've said it before, I'll say it again, the, the debate will come about when you have a location.
Oh, yeah.
If, if the people, if whoever's around the location is likely, but right now you haven't said where.
Right.
So everyone's kinda waiting to see.
Right now, we've got two, two spots, one on, uh, exit two, and one that just opened up and I contacted the man that owns it, uh, right across from exit one, RV. Uh, that guy that owns the property over there, he wants to rent us that land right out by the railroad tracks. Which would work out great because then I could advertise exit one and that's great for location.
There is no exit one, there is no exit one. No, no, there's literally, there's no exit one in the state on Route four.
So, you know, you're right, so, but it's first exit, whatever, in Vermont, you know, if you ever say first exit is, uh, and since out-of-state customers are, and will be, the way the laws are written right now are bread and butter, uh, to be honest, so, uh, it's just putting us closer to them.
Others, questions? Jeff?
Uh, where's, since the fire department is doing the permitting, or?
Well, they go to the town clerk, at least in Pittsburgh, what they do in Rockland Town, they go to the town manager, um, they, Pittsburgh's got a very simple form. They, they write down where it's gonna be, what date it's gonna be, uh, they have the police chief, fire chief, and town manager sign it.
Okay, what's our plan?
Fire chief. Fire chief. We, we use the same permit that we've been using since.
See, every town of mine has their own.
A burn permit?
And is the fireworks permit.
Okay.
And it mirrors what the state has on their website.
So who collects the fee?
Do we have a fee?
There is no fee. Currently, there is no fee.
And that would be an ordinance change, to change that fee or not?
It's not an ordinance.
I don't know if it would be an ordinance, it might just be a matter of putting it on the fee schedule.
It's not in here, though.
Correct.
So I, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, assessing a, a permit fee and it goes to the town to, to defray the, the extra cost. Because that is at least proportional to the activities. In other words, an upfront fee is all upfront, uh, and you may get a thousand permit requests or one. If there is a thousand permit requests and you apply a permit fee for every permit, then at least you're getting proportional, uh, you know.
What's the sales ratio between like townspeople versus out-of-state? Is there a?
So it's, it's, yeah, uh, so when Rockland Town started having an issue a couple of years ago, I told them, we could easily just not sell to Rockland Town. It's not gonna affect our sales, our out-of-state sales is what.
That's always.
And out of town, way out of town, uh, uh, people coming in, not, the locals is, is honestly not as much as anything.
This year Pittsburgh had fourteen permits, so we sold fourteen people in Pittsburgh.
And, and to be honest, Rockland Town, it was running very smoothly, if you type even Mary Ashcroft, it was running very smoothly until the state did this. And the state is the one that threw the monkey action and all this. And now here we are trying to figure it out amongst ourselves instead of the state, uh, you know, coming in and actually, uh, re-legislating, which supposedly they're supposed to do this winter. Supposed to be on the docket for January, according to Butch Shaw, uh, it's already on. So hopefully they get straightened out and it becomes even easier for us as, to deal with, you know.
I know Butch Shaw told me that the Supreme Court said they are taking no more, anything that goes in for fireworks to the Supreme Court, they're not even hearing it because they said, the legislature's gotta straighten it out before they do anymore.
Joe, what is like a typical permit fee, if you were to come in as a new business? Say Dunkin' Donuts building up on, what does the fee schedule look like for something like that?
Oh, we don't, yeah, we don't charge.
Like a construction fee?
No construction fees.
Zoing permit?
Yeah, zoning was like thirty-five bucks or something.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then you have a water fee and stuff like, there's no water at sewer, but you have, the water and sewer fees get bigger as the permit is sized.
Volume.
My question.
Volume and.
Yeah, volume, right, volume.
My question to Joe, when we came up with the five thousand dollars, just wanna make sure my assumptions are correct. My assumption was, that's what we thought, we, we would, we would be spending additional monies for managing, having this here, hey, that's one question. I have a sad, another question after that too, if this new business came in here in this operating out of the box, what's the, what's the tax revenues, what, what would be the impact on the grand list? If I, am I saying no to an impact of the grand list of thousands of dollars, or am I saying no to an impact of hundreds of dollars?
No, so the police, the, the police costs, um, we've never had to deal with this, but we were estimating about forty-eight hours of additional calls. Maybe not all, you know, one day, one day, but spread out through like over New Year's and obviously Fourth of July, we get a lot of calls right now for that, so.
And those are all purchased out of state? They would still have to be purchased out of state, unless there was a permit.
Yeah, but we were anticipating if, if there is somebody to buy, if, if it's that close, we expect people to buy. And, and we expect more people to complain because there are more fireworks being blasted off.
And so what Pittsburgh does with that, is that's why they get the permit, so they call you and say, there's somebody shooting them off next door?
They don't wear.
Yes, they already got a permit, they're legal, that's how they do it.
Honestly, we've been saying this since the beginning, also with Rockland Town. We generally know who we sell to, and I generally know after that a return call for customer now after all these years. You come to us and say, we're having a problem on Elm Street, we're having a problem, this is nonsense, and these guys have been lighting them off, and you guys have been open for two weeks, and they've been lighting them off every night for a week. I can go back through my records and tell you guys, oh, this was so-and-so, or I can show you guys, these did not come from me. These, these getting them from one of my competitors because of the records that we keep, you know, um, we, we were way more into helping you guys solve the problem. So that we can sell to out-of-staters that make money, you know, we don't wanna come and disrupt the town, you know what I mean? We just wanna be able to go home at the end of the year, you know, uh, we don't, we want it to be a hometown, you know, we wanna stay here. It's not a hit and run where we're hoping to grab some money and then we'll, you know, we're out of here. That's, if we move here, we wanna be here, I wanna be here for ten years, you know.
Again, I guess what I'm trying to get in my mind is, what's the advantage to Fairhaven of having you here?
So that's why I say, the tax, the animal sign.
I do have, I will tell you, there's a guy in Pittsburgh that got a permit this year legally, sold to him legally, he shot him off late, and he came back to get more and I would not sell it to him. I said, you broke the, you shot him off at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, I said, that's not the way we do business, and I won't sell to him again.
But you don't always know that.
No.
Oh, it's what we do.
I had a complaint myself, somebody called me and said, you know, this guy across the street shooting them off, but I go.
And I think number four, though, the permit could address that.
Yes.
But, but when I think of a business coming to Fairhaven, I'm saying, oh, so are you going to hire a Fairhaven person to run your, your business? Are you gonna give us some, some, is someone gonna be working and therefore, hey, I see that as a plus?
So here's, so here's, so here's exactly, we, we do hope to add an employee or two. Um, we spend annually about six to seven thousand dollars a year on radio ads to bring people into where we are. So we'd be doing that, bringing people into Fairhaven, we'd be spending six to seven thousand dollars a year on radio, oversized in Fairhaven and our new location. Now, I'm not saying that's good, I don't know what, sales, people coming from Lake George or Albany into Fairhaven and getting gas before they go home or stop in a McDonald's or. I don't know what impact that would have, but I bet it would have some, uh, in a positive way. I mean, we are promoting, that's six thousand dollars a year in positive promotions about Fairhaven, bringing people into Fairhaven as one of our locations a year. And that's a positive, in my mind, that's a positive thing for Fairhaven, that's sixth way and Fairhaven is being mentioned all summer long, all summer long, people hearing it wherever they're going. You know, it's just, not, it's not nothing.
Okay, other questions? I mean, I was just looking at number four, you know, if, um, you guys shall not sell any fireworks to residents without a permit.
And we would do that whether they changed the law or not, you know, we said that through that.
And I would assume the fire chief could revoke a permit if there were complaints with a resident, the chief could say, hey, I've revoked that permit, and then, you know, that could solve some of the, the issues, you know, that, concerns with that.
I mean, we aren't here, like he said, and I feel the same way he does, we're here to be a family. That's, you know, if you guys have a problem and we have a problem, we should be able to work it out, you know.
Because right now, the Fairhaven has no, people, people in Fairhaven can go by, um, from Los DeRos, they can go by in New Hampshire, they can, they can go by wherever they want to. Having us here does give you guys a little bit of control over, we're telling them what the law is. Otherwise, someone could drive right over to New Hampshire and pick up wherever they want, come back here without a permit and light them off. Granted, they might get the cops called on them.
But wouldn't they do that regardless, whether you're or not?
Well, well, we, we're out there also telling people, we're not lying to people, we're telling what the real law is, so if they're coming in, they're getting the straight from us, you know, that.
What the law, what the laws are.
Yeah.
Let me ask again, and this is only for a one, probably for you, it's, it's a one-year permit. And I heard the comment about donating to the fire department, I'm saying, well, are we saying a one-year permit, that we do a trial, one-year permit and, and, because I'm still, I still have some concerns because we have fireworks from.
Rockland Town did that one, one year, the first, first two years, after that, they gave us a three year.
That's another thing that's up to you guys, you can give us a five-year permit or you can give us a one-year permit. You know, if you could do it as a one year, and then see how it goes, but I, we have to come back in front of you anyway next year to get it again. And if it's, if it blew the Fairhaven off and it became sixty hours of police, and, I mean, it's, you guys can easily say no. Thank you, we tried it for a year, but it did not work.
So if we did a one-year permit and instead of five thousand, because you were gonna give a thousand dollars to the fire department anyway.
Yes, we are.
It's a thousand dollars and you don't decide, but we decide whether it's Fairhaven concerns, whether it's rotating, Fairhaven concerns, fire department, rescue squad. It doesn't always have to be one place.
Sure, I, I don't agree giving it to the fire department, because it, it doesn't actually go to run the fire department.
Right, well, they have their own pile of money besides.
But it doesn't go to run the fire department.
But it's there for argument to give there.
Oh, no, but, but we.
They can do what they want.
They go to Pittsburgh because they go, they buy stuff.
It goes directly to Pittsburgh.
They'll buy some, they'll buy.
But that's not the way it works here, they're fully funded by the taxpayers.
Oh, okay.
So we would.
I hear that.
We wanna donate where it would work. You know, we want, like we said, Pittsburgh, we know that it's going to buy radios, or we know that, we know building, so, I mean, so we know where it's going. I don't want, we're not looking to just throw a thousand dollars and win, so, that would be, that would be something for you guys to tell us. Listen, that thousand dollars would best be donated to this or that, but that's what we pledge to the town every year. You know, whatever, whatever it may be, we want it to be used, we don't want it to just go into a sum where no one feels that.
So if that were the case, if you were to donate it to town for, to be used for the best.
Sure, sure.
Then it's net-net the same to you.
Then that would be just as.
Depends on, no matter who we write the check to.
Oh, I was just thinking, um, like as a resident, actually on the street, people do light off fireworks fairly often. All the time. I don't know how much, how many calls the police get about it, I don't know if those fireworks are permitted or not, but, um, I could see how it would really simplify things if, you know, if you're talking about the idea of fifteen dollars or twenty dollars, whatever it is for every resident. Like, it would make it so much easier for the police, because like you said, if you have records of who you sold to, you know, that like, I could picture it making it a lot easier for the police. And it's a revenue stream for the town and, and the idea, like you were saying, of making it proportional to the sales. As a former business owner who just fucking off their business just like us, but COVID, like, I can really appreciate where you're coming from, five thousand dollars, it's a lot of money upfront. If, if you have huge businesses or do, you know, have.
We were already.
But that, that's very prohibitive when you're considering all the, so I had, as a resident, I just, you know, wanna say that I really, really need more business in the town, so.
So is there?
I just have one other question. Joe, if someday, by some miracle, the, uh, the one percent tax were to be approved, would, the option tax, thank you, would this fall under the option tax?
I think so, yeah.
It's just, this is retail sales, so.
It does.
It's not the.
It does, it's what Rockland Town.
Okay, that, that applies then.
But we, we'd be more than willing to do that, I mean, that's.
We gotta get the voters on board, so it has nothing to do with you guys, it, it, yeah.
So is there agreement, I think I heard, I don't know, maybe not, um, of a thousand dollar permit fee to be donated at the discretion of the board?
As to where it goes, yeah.
Is there any discussion on a permit fee for the applicant looking to get a permit from the fire chief? You know, is that a five, ten, fifteen, what'd you say Pittsburgh was?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
And the thing is, if people wanna shoot fireworks, fifteen dollars is.
There's nothing compared to.
Yes, all right.
You know, if they, they be legal and everything, they, and it took, it, it took us a year before the people realized that Pittsburgh wasn't gonna fool around. And now they up, like I said, they got fourteen permits this year, but the fire chief was, was willing to give them, the, the permit. The first year, the fire chief we had, he didn't give any. And it's safer that way, because you, you know, you know where they are.
Other questions? I mean, I don't know if we wanna.
We had consensus on the, the local permit?
I think so.
Maybe not on the dollar amount, but.
Yeah.
Local permits.
I haven't heard, Joe, I, what are your thoughts?
Hey. Okay, so this is something different, but, um, I, I think it will, I think it's gonna cause more trouble in the short term. Which is fine, I mean, we just deal with things as they come up, it's not a good or bad thing, I guess, it's just a thing. Uh, but we're gonna, what I could see happening as the permits start to, start to go out, people, one, won't buy permits, because they don't buy permit, they don't get permits now for free. Two, if we start charging, then the police are going to have to actually start penalizing people, right? You didn't get your permit, here's your fee because you shot off fireworks, or are we gonna be the fireworks police?
No, because that would only be for sales with these, these guys and they wouldn't sell.
Somebody shoots them off, even now, when we're not in town, and you go there, the police go there, they can, that's a hundred dollar fine.
That's, that's what we're gonna have.
If someone, they, a, that, it calls and, and, you know, says they wanna shut down, then the police are.
But regardless of their business, they would only sell to a permit.
That was, that was my thoughts in terms of, of that, but, um, how willing, in, in terms of the permit, though, you talk about your advertising that you're gonna do. Would you be amenable to, if you're gonna do six radio ads, would you be amenable to saying, "Come buy our fireworks." And by the way, Finder's Keepers is open today too, maybe you should go run down there.
I don't know how that would work, if we're running two spots and saying that.
We spend, we spend a lot of money with.
I forget, annoyance.
So.
That's a good thought, though.
Let's welcome right in here, it's short money to add.
I mean, they could put a sign.
But telling the radio station, like, talking to them about, this is the deal that we have set up with Fairhaven, that we'd like to, what, advertise every fifth, every fifth, uh, piggyback commercial with somebody else from town. And those people on the list, have us all.
RV one wanted to add, go in with us, you know.
A thousand dollar donation.
We'd like to play, you know, we wanna be involved, we would, we would like to be involved with the, with the other businesses in town. If it was a positive, we wanna keep it positive.
A thousand dollars donation is nice, but it would just get absorbed into whatever. I could really see, because we're actively trying to advertise and kind of brand Fairhaven, and that would be a great, that would be a, a nice, a nice, it'd be a generous thing for you guys to say.
Say we dropped a thousand dollars and we put, take the thousand and put it in each ad and mention one place.
Here's, here's what I think, I think that's something for you and I, to easily discuss, doesn't necessarily need to go into the permit, that's something that you would, we could have a gentleman's handshake and say, yeah, we're, we're.
Advertising Fairhaven is different than.
I think Fairhaven is one thing, but I think picking it on, you know.
I think if you're picking.
If you're only using my business or Claire's. You know, if you only advertise Claire's business and not mine, I, I'm gonna be frustrated, right?
So, so if there's, but if there's a public thing.
I can't support that.
As a park or as a thing that Fairhaven owns or a thing that Fairhaven's doing, as far as like townwide sale or something like that.
Apple Fest this weekend.
Yeah, we would definitely love to do that.
Joe.
Friday night.
Right, right, whatever you do.
Lot party or whatever, yeah.
All right, Joe, continue on, you got some other?
No, that is all.
That was it?
That was it.
All right.
And, and this is, this is an annual permit, so that next year, after we try it out. We'll be here talking again to see what we need, if we need to.
Right, just.
May not need to.
Well, I know, I know Pittsburgh, on the first year, we, you know, it was a rocky road and we went back in. We sat down as a group and we worked things out and right now, they're, they're great with us, we're, they couldn't be happier.
Just to clarify, the permit could be a three-year, four-year, one-year, five-year.
But you know, the thing was, the thing is, even if you gave it to us for three or five or whatever, if we break the law, you have.
You can revoke it anyways.
You can, yes.
So, the town has to say that, so if the town wants to say no at any point, doesn't matter what you roll down here, you roll this, you can just pull us back in.
All right, do we, is there action you wanna take tonight, or do you wanna give Joe some direction to redraft and for the next permitting to approve, or? I mean, I know you guys said you weren't really needing till November-ish.
No, no, we're flexible right now, so.
I think, personally, I think a consensus is fine, and it's really, I, I think, once we have a location.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe give it a, a two or three-week buffer of time for, you know, and announce a location or, you know, tell, tell, and maybe have another public hearing. We may have backlash. tell, tell, and maybe have another public hearing. We may have backlash on the location.
Or even, see, I'm still nervous that there's nobody here after what came up before. I, I don't mind saying that, just having the minutes reflect in this meeting, that we have given tentative approval to the, the fireworks and we're, we're talking, uh, the, a permit fee. We're, we're, we're talking a donation to, to the town, but whatever, because I want the minutes to come out and say, it's going forward and that, and it gives one more opportunity when we come back to, uh, to say yes, yes or no.
This is the location.
And here, and hopefully we'll have a location.
Let's just say for, I'm going to say that it's the exit one location, that that's where, because that's where I would really like.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, to be honest with you, that's my, in my mind, that's my number one place is right there, uh, right across from exit one.
Mm-hmm.
In that field.
That little triangle.
Yup, there's a white, there's a white.
It's going to be up front or not.
There's a white garage.
It's going to be in front of the white garage.
Remember, there's a white.
Or a blue garage.
Oh.
There's a log home and then a.
Okay, so it's.
Which would have nothing.
Do we have homeowners that, that we would want to, see, there's, after our experience with the crowd coming in from going to Academy, going different things with, with some other things, I want to make sure our homeowners where this is going to happen will have an opportunity as well.
You got the renters.
So isn't that going to need another permit where they put the?
Mike would probably need zoning.
Where they put the container and.
Container.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's, it's a small, it's like fifteen dollars or something like that and there's no water shore.
Application, I would assume.
Yeah, there's no shore, there's no.
Yeah, right, but it is a zoning application.
So I think the board's only concerned, oh, I know we're concerned about.
Yeah, right.
As well, but is the permit itself. I think zoning would be the ones worried about a location, setbacks, all that stuff with the property.
Because you got the renters in that, the rental place, but you got the house just a little bit towards town. There's woods, a wooded buffer, but.
Yeah, and the track, is that in front of the tracks?
Just, it's just, I think it's just on the other side of the track.
There's not enough room between the road and the track.
Gotcha.
But it's, it's the, it's the same person that owns that, that owns the, uh, rent, that log cabin and that.
Same.
That doesn't stop the renters from.
Oh, no, they can still.
They can complain separately.
Well, they were, they were going to rent us the other spot, but glad somebody backed up because they didn't own the land there.
But again, there's not going to be fireworks going off.
Super.
All right, so I think there's consensus, um, of changing number eight, Joe, to, um, permit fee of a thousand dollars to be donated at the discretion of the select board. I mean, with input from you guys, for sure.
Yeah, we want to know where, where.
We're always going to be used for that, right?
I don't know if there's consensus on a permit fee for the individual applying to.
That would be.
That's us. Separate anyway.
That's us. That has nothing to do with the permit.
Nothing to do with this, okay.
They have to have a, a town permit.
Gotcha, so that would be.
But I think that needs, that needs to be on the, an agenda soon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Why, I, I, again, I'm just, just trying to say, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we just, if, if.
Are included in here.
Fifteen dollars, just include it right here, fifteen dollars instead of holding on.
But it's not part of the permit.
I don't think you can put it here.
Yeah, you can't put it here because this is the discussion about the permit.
Document, but part of our decision that the minutes are going to show that we agree to a permit fee.
To be correct, you ought to have it on the, on the, uh, the agenda to talk about the permit fee.
Okay.
But, so people can come and talk specifically about the permit fee.
So I think we need to change number eight as we, we just discussed. Um, Joe can make those changes and bring it back at the next meeting. Um.
Well, or, but we're not going to be signing the permit and I would imagine, uh, located, the located at is not set yet.
Not set?
Yeah, I mean, we can't sign this until this is fully filled out.
Gotcha.
And.
But if you guys.
We can approve. You have consensus.
Yeah, if you guys say, yeah, you guys are going to be able to do it, then we go rent the land.
Well, you've just got to go through the, the zoning.
No, correct, right.
Zoning as well.
Exactly. I mean, you got to do everything legally.
Because you're, 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 you're nearby houses, so just, you're going to have setbacks and stuff like that. I.
So I think there's consensus of the board to move forward at the thousand dollar rate. I don't hear any objection to that, so.
Basic consensus, uh, is now.
It's not a approval, but it's.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody moving. Everybody moving forward to the next step.
I would, I would, uh, nego, you know, go through zoning and get that and negotiate a lease, but don't sign the lease until you come over and fill this out and.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Or just contingent on a permit.
Contingent on a permit.
Right, right, right. Now, how do we do this with the zoning?
Joe would go.
Joe can get you the.
And, uh, if you could just email me and give me a call and we can get that along.
Well, just. You'll, you'll hear from Phil.
Call Phil.
Okay, thank you. He's his only guy, yeah. Okay, thank you. Well, then, thank you for putting that in motion.
Based here on.
Okay.
All right, anything else for the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-six.
I'm pretty good.
And call the regular meeting to order at seven thirty-six. Uh, any amendments to the agenda needed? Joe, you got anything?
Oh, actually, I have a, a little bit.
Okay.
Um, under new business, um, the water line repair, we, uh, we've been trying to get more than just the one quote. Um, Aaron finally talked to Casala and they're going to give us a, a quote on that. Um, so.
That's for Adam Street?
Yeah, so there is nothing, there's no action on the water line yet. And, and B, under special event permits, um, that event was canceled. Uh, the, the, the explosion of COVID in the area, um, has just, it.
Slowed the.
To be safe, I mean, we were going to bring a lot of people together in a small space and we just didn't think that that was appropriate.
All right.
That's too bad.
So is there a motion to remove those from the agenda or?
I'll make a motion to, under new business, to remove items A, water line repairs, and item B, special events permits from the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, approval minutes from August twenty-first.
But before we, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I just didn't know if, when we get to old business, park ordinance review and approval.
Yeah.
Uh, just, I'm okay with review. We, without a public meeting on that, we, approval can't happen. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I want to, I want to hand, hand approval be deleted from the agenda.
What this, what is this?
Under, under park ordinance review because, uh, because we haven't had a public, uh, hearing, uh, about the.
Order.
About that, about that ordinance.
Taking off end approval?
Of the school being, no trespassing from nine to three. We, we really need neighbors and everyone to have a chance to come and talk to us.
So Jeff, are you fine?
Sure.
And Ron, you're fine, okay. Any other changes needed?
So I'll make a motion to, under old business, item B, park ordinance, uh, review and approval to delete and approval.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that under the amendments and.
All three together, yeah.
We'll do a three motion. No, everybody, put up that word. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Clear, that was Jeff and then Ron.
Yep.
For those three changes.
I added that to my motion.
Jeff made a motion to remove, um, nine A and nine B.
Um. He did first.
No.
Second.
No, he didn't, he didn't. Jeff did first. So just for your notes, right?
Sure.
Jeff and Ron?
It was Jeff to remove nine A, nine B.
Yeah.
And then we added to remove.
If Glenn wants his name.
An approach.
Joe, add that right to it.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
With Glenn's suggestion.
So it's Jeff, who seconded it?
Rod.
I did.
Okay, and everybody was in favor of that?
Sure.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. So we have an agenda now.
But if Glenn wants his name on it, it's fine with me.
He'll get plenty. He's got opportunity.
You did, you did very good.
Thank you.
Um, five minutes for public comment.
Yeah, that'd be me.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Public comment.
I know you don't want to get into any dog park stuff, um, but.
Well, it wouldn't be a meeting if we didn't.
It wouldn't be, would it? Um, so anyway, I've had emails here, um, and they go into, um, what constitutes, um, a wetland violation, um, all that kind of thing. And I know when Joe presented, um.
We can watch this, we can see this.
He said that, that the, um, fines would be humongously expensive for wetland violations. But I looked at what he had said, um, in his email to Zapata, and he said he wanted to know about fines for wetland violations. And then he came to the meeting and said, so the dog park can't be open. Um, it, it doesn't make sense when in the first one, um, you know, the second page of the first section, where she describes wetland, um, the wetlands and how you can put up the fence, you can run the dogs and you don't need a permit. So then to get this email listing all these horrific fines and it can go to court and the scare tactics for the board, when that wasn't the question. The question was, why can't people and dogs be in the dog park while the permit process is going through? So the final page is, I contacted Alora Lapierre, up in La Pelleira, she's the wetlands manager. And there is the email from her in which I asked about that and, um, I highlighted her answer as um, pertains to this issue. And it sounds like from what she said, it's because of the town not wanting to have accidental encroachments. Somebody using the dog park isn't going to come in and dump a load of gravel. It, they're just having the dogs in the dog park is not a wetlands violation. So for us to have the dog park, it's already taken three months and as far as I know, the permit hasn't even been submitted. You're talking till next spring. So the people that were told that the dog park would be open the spring of summer, we can't even use it in the fall. Um, and I just want clarification of why it's not allowed because from what the Lapierre said was that it's the town isn't superseded by the wetlands people and that we would have to get permission from the town, which makes it sound like the edict is coming from the town. So that, that's an issue for me, so that's.
Like she said, the permitted activities do not, don't like overrule what the property owner desires.
Can we have a copy of that?
Oh, sure. And reasoning is to deploy an inadvertent violation here.
I.
No, no one's doing anything that's not a permitted activity. We have to defend and now people want to run their dogs there, right? Yeah, so we don't understand.
I think what's happening now is there are a lot of eyes on this and no one wants to, uh, put their neck out at this point.
I don't want people to go in there with their dogs.
I don't think they're going to, uh, say, go ahead and use it or.
They didn't.
They're saying they can't, that what is considered a permitted activity from the state's point of view, they can't tell us that we're allowed to use it because it's up to the town to decide.
And so the town. We have to get permission from the town.
Because we're.
To let people run in the dog park as it is. We're not putting any structures up.
Yeah, so.
It's very clear from that letter that the only thing we have to do at this point is get permission from the landowner, which is the town. So that's why we're here. We want to get permission from the town to be able to run dogs. I don't want to put a sign up on the fence saying, because there isn't a lock yet. I don't want to put a sign on the fence saying, the town has deemed that the dog park can't be open because it's not the wetlands people that are saying it. It's the town.
That's. That's not true. The email, the email, I did say, we're not using the dog park. The email I got from both Dory and Zapata said, don't put dogs in the dog park until.
But this is their boss.
Their boss said we can't.
I think we're really putting these people on the spot.
I, I understand, I understand.
Why are we doing that?
Have, have, have we, have we violated a potential permit yet?
No, and we're not going to.
Are you sure?
Yes. How would we violate?
How would we? Absolutely. You think people are going to go in there and start dumping gravel and playing Volcan?
Putting up all the structures?
Putting in structures?
Allowing people to go in there with their dogs.
Okay, that's, if, if you're confident.
We're confident.
Well, when you go up to the airport.
But I'm not, I'm, so, so I will have to be, I will have to be outboarded by the board because I will not put the town of Fairhaven in the position where we have to pay a fifteen thousand dollar fine because we knowingly violated this permit. I am not going to do that. The state has already come down on Shelburne and, Shelburne?
Yes.
Yeah. They told us when we started, look at this, this will happen to you. The only, so it's easy to sit in the crowds and say, let's do it. The only person that is going to get in trouble and have to pay that fifteen thousand dollars is this guy and these people. Who's going to pay the fifteen thousand when that fine comes?
You're talking about a month's time in fall.
No, I, I just asked the question, who's, are you guys going to volunteer to pay the fifteen thousand dollar fine?
When somebody goes in there and dumps gravel?
I, I just.
We know they're dumping gravel in the wetlands. It ain't us.
It sounds like you're volunteering the fifteen thousand upfront. I'm not going to, I'm not going to volunteer at Fairhaven to pay a fine when we don't have to do that.
That makes no sense.
It makes sense.
Don't go now.
I, I will, I will take the check and deposit it for fifteen thousand dollar fine. If you're willing to put your neck out there.
All right, I would really love to hear what the board has to say, Roger.
Well, this is public comment. We just really saw it, so anything else for public comment?
All right.
No, but, but not, you know.
Oh.
All right, well, I guess I have something to say that really isn't probably relevant and probably most people here aren't old enough to remember, but um, my stepfather, John Griffith, you would remember, Claire probably remembers, um, has a farm on Scotch Hill, yeah.
Had a farm.
He did the pond and he had a permit for the pond. It was old, but it was a farm plan. He had a permit for the pond. Somehow, he never did find out. It was reported to the wetlands, um, as someone felt he had violated the wetlands permit. Um, long story short, it cost him fifty-five thousand dollars to reconstruct. They had to take all the, the dirt that came out of the pond and separate it, I don't know, you probably know more about it than I did, into different types of soil to get it. I mean, it was ridiculous.
Try to put it back.
I, I, I.
Yeah, and, um, so when you think that things sound ridiculous and could never happen, I'm just saying they did and they do.
But there's nothing else that's going to be done except people walking in and throwing the ball. I mean, what, what part of a wetlands violation would that possibly entail?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm just saying.
I don't think anybody would.
What happened?
No, of course they wouldn't. They are going to go dump gravel when they bring their dog to play and say, oh, it's kind of wet. I think I need a truckload of gravel and I'm going to dump it there.
I, I'm concerned that it's as easy as somebody putting, uh, a couple things out there for their dog to jump over. I, I think it's that easy to get.
But in her, she says you can put the benches as long as you don't do cement. So if somebody putting something for their dog to jump over, this movable.
That's actually allowed.
Is actually.
It is allowed, okay.
It is allowed. Look, there's a requirement they have against wetlands, that's allowed.
I just think there's so much interpretation to these wetland things.
That was kind of my...
That I wanted to have the...
Brendan, Brendan Schloss.
Yeah, it does.
If you look at the website, they very clearly state what are permitted activities in Class II wetland. Directing fences, playing with your dog, hiking, running, flying kites, whatever. You can do those things in Class II wetland. We erected a fence, we have two emails from Zapata saying directing a fence, bringing the dogs in, playing with them and mowing according to a similar regime to the existing regime is allowed and it does not require any permit. And that is all we're proposing to do right now.
But even, even the mowing is in question.
Right.
Right now.
How do we...
Even the mowing is in question.
Why is that?
Which I would, I am on your side, I completely...
We're not communicating with them, this joke, why is that? We still haven't gotten an answer to that. And I thought, really Carol had great suggestions to say like, why don't we get clarification on this and let's talk about it? We still don't have that.
I don't think we really need to get clarification. The permit's working through, we're gonna get it, I think, that's the way I understand it.
How far is it actually from being turned into the state?
I thought it was actually, you know...
We had to pull it back out, there was question of, well, the last meeting, we were gonna remove some stuff.
There's an agenda item, isn't there, to talk about?
Yeah.
The permit, once we get through the five minutes for public comment.
All right, so just the, the taking the money from the fund come into the financing the permit? Is that coming later?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's on schedule, okay.
Yes.
Anybody else for public comment? John, do you got anything?
No.
Sure?
Positive.
Just said patiently.
Very positive.
All right.
Very positive.
Carol mentioned that the house next to me, First Street, is being fixed up.
Awesome.
Cars are gone, trees down, Cindy's painting the porch.
Good, that's great.
Yeah.
Department head reports. We didn't do them.
Motion, motion...
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn, see Glenn got his second.
He tried to get us first.
Whether there are corrections needed for the... No. All in favor? Thanks, Glenn.
I totally missed it again.
Jeff made the motion, I seconded, and they're approved.
Unanimated.
Jeff wrote it down. I'm naming this. Okay, department head reports.
Police on the... Police, Jeff, Glenn, all right?
Yep.
Yes.
The police chief is out of town on his honeymoon, so I don't have a report from them other than we did take a call to, or have a call up to Fork and mechanic where a blow log container clipped a telephone wire, pulled apart a house. Yeah, yeah.
Do we know who it was?
Yep. Alfred came back to the scene on his own.
John was waiting for me.
All right.
Sweet.
They've hit the what?
The telephone wire. Sandy, so for the highway water and sewer, highway side sand and gravel are coming in, is coming in. All our vehicles have been, have had their annual maintenance done. Oil undercoating is continuing on that, those pieces of equipment, the big trucks, snowplows. And the MRGP, so Jeff, we met one of the landowners up near your house a couple weeks ago for the MRGP program.
Okay.
For the water runoff on the side of the roads.
Oh, okay.
So we're still doing those projects. That project on the hill is not going to be done.
Okay.
It's just there's, there are some big trees.
Too many questions.
Yeah, well, there's a big trees and stone walls and there's some ledge under there, which exempt those locations.
Really?
Yeah, funny.
Sweet.
Yeah, so we're not going to dig that, that would be a mess anyway.
I was very concerned that it would turn into a bigger...
Reverser.
If it doesn't wash now, why fight with it later?
Don't create a problem. Not a problem. On the water side, like I mentioned earlier, Casella's going to come give us a price, a quote to look at the water mains crossing over Adam Street Bridge.
Did we determine that that is in the cement, the concrete or beside it?
They think it's in the concrete. We were going to do some exploratory thing, yeah, digging, just to see. We reached out to Ferguson, but he had to pass on that project, so.
Oh.
I was a little concerned with the bid that we got, all the exemptions, the exceptions that they, that were not in the bid.
Jeff, do you remember that was repaired once before in Rep. Ford?
I think that may have been before me.
Where the hellog was up, where it goes up the road for a house? That section in there, that was taken apart and repaired before.
I think that may have been before me.
Well, it was done.
I'm pretty old, that may have been before me.
Was concerned then that when the cement settled, it would break the pipe.
Yeah.
We didn't, we did get in touch with a diving company to take a look at the intake pipe at the, at the water plant, that thing had a small trickle coming out of it. So we're going to get, hopefully this year, somebody down there to take a look to see where the water's really coming from.
You just, you just in the tunnel, need breathing apparatus or you're actually dug?
Going to the water.
Oh, to see what's coming around, okay, all right.
We did send Ferguson's in, into the tunnel. And they took out a portion of the wall to look and they, they did see there's water coming in.
Can't tell where.
But you can't, yeah. So Stewart's, Stewart's line has been connected, the new Stewart's up here on, yeah, done, thank you.
What do you mean, line?
Water sewer.
The water line. They connected their one water line, their new water line. They're going to disconnect the old two from the red house and then the old building. Those are going to be disconnected and then capped off. Stewart's, and this is, I don't know if I've said it in public and if I've told, I've just told people. We've got to give Aaron a lot of credit. Stewart's, they're going to connect their new sewer line to the system. But at the same time, Aaron negotiated the new manhole being dropped in the road up there. And this really opens up, it was a long distance between manholes. So Aaron really got, we, this was a big win for the town to have Stewart's drop that manhole in it. It's just going to make cleaning and maintenance that much easier. Yeah, so good job, Aaron. Waste water, the plant upgrade's still chugging right along. We are having some difficulty getting some of the big equipment on site in a timely manner. Everybody's short staffed, so bringing in equipment to use on site has become a problem. It's just slowing the process down.
Our people are slowing it down?
No, 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 not our guys, the contractors. They're having trouble getting their stuff in.
Is there a performance date on this project?
There is, I don't know what offhand.
Are we in any danger of...
No, they're, they were actually talking about working through shutdown. So that, you know, they shut down for the winter for construction, but they were talking about not. So we're, I mean, it depends on weather, obviously, but that's where we're at now.
As long as that's allowed in our spec by our engineers and...
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, are they going to be pouring concrete?
That'll be done.
No, no, okay.
The big... October 19th and 20th, we're still doing the sewer flushing. Just as a heads up, you'll see the truck out, they end up in the middle of the road. And then Stewart's, again, they're going to connect that new sewer main next week. And that's what, that's what they got.
And are we doing the sewer or are we getting A1?
Flushing, A1 doing the flush.
Okay, any questions for DPW? Oh, I, did anyone look at the manholes out on...
North Main?
No, we didn't, and I was supposed to call you about it, I'm sorry.
Well, that's less important than, you know, having the discussion again with Aaron. I mean, I don't, it's not absolutely necessary that I interject myself. But, you know, if Aaron says, oh, okay, I understand what he's saying.
You're good.
Then, then we're good.
No, no, we would prefer to have you, yeah, on site.
Anything else? Okay, town manager report?
A little bit of, this is different, the National Opioid Settlement. I don't know if anybody's been following that. The town's part of it, we need to sign up. Just as a heads up, they'll send us maybe some money. We'll see.
Did we have a mini crisis here?
Everybody gets a little bit, I guess, we'll get our 100 bucks. So Three Grove, I don't know if I told you last time, Three Grove did end up signing up for the B cap program and their bill was approved, their water bill. Salt Shed is out to bid right now, plans are in the office. There is a mandatory, there's a mandatory pre-bid meeting the 22nd, I believe, for that project. Bids are due November 1st. Water pipe. Got a lot of stuff that we already talked about. For the Build Back Better Program, this is the big, the storage, cold storage unit. We're moving forward with that. We have a meeting with the railroad tomorrow. We're going to the site at, not the first exit.
Well, it's first exit, just not exit one.
Prospect Street, to take a look. Apparently there are plans for this project, I just need to talk to the right person. So if anybody knows the guy that has the plans, send it my way.
I thought Standard had the plans, that's what he told me.
He knew a guy, yeah. Salt Shed is out. Town renovation, we got most of the paperwork into USDA. I'm waiting on the green light to start construction here in this building. That's been a tough road to hope, but we're getting there. Playground replacement, they gave us the go-ahead as of October 1st. And just before this meeting, I did receive the contract in my email, so we'll get that going. I am going to re-bid that project, though. It's been two years since we, two years since we got the original bids. I don't know what playground equipment looks like right now in terms of pricing. So it would just be a good idea to do that.
Are we, are they, those bids got rejected in some way or something?
No, one bid was accepted two years ago. But the pricing is outdated at this point, they're not going to hold their...
I wouldn't think, did we? Okay. I just, we didn't want to make, want to make sure we're not unhooked for that in some way.
You received a money out of the fish?
We received a go-ahead October 1st.
So is there, once we rebid, tentatively, there's a lot of people wondering what's going on with playgrounds. Tentatively, are we talking spring, what's it say?
That's what it's looking like spring. I don't, there's concrete involved in pouring and setting these things up. I don't see pouring concrete in, in any time soon, yeah. I wouldn't want to do that, it's, remember winter's not something to fool with.
On the, on the off chance that I'm being a smart aleck, are they going to be able to do work between the hours of eight and three?
We'll find out. Exemption.
That took me a second.
So I met with Rutland Regional last week, and then we met with Cedar and a member of Rutland Regional yesterday. They're helping us with a little bit of advertising and kind of town branding, which is something we really need. We need to get, Fairhaven is a great town, they have a lot going for us, but we just don't, we just don't help people. And that's always difficult. And Rutland Regional, they roped theirself into that sidewalk grant, so they're managing that program for us. So they're gonna, they're going to give us updates and they're going to manage the process from choosing contractors to holding bid sessions to facilitating the public hearings. Okay, we're still going, finally got the license to sell 12 South Main. I'm going to start working on that, not next week, the week after. Had a great coaching session, so I signed up for a coaching session through ICMA. This is just mentors. Me and the staff are going to start hitting that. And downtown designation and our zoning ordinances. I'm working with Rutland Regional on that, they're going to draft a grant for us. $7,000 to rewrite our zoning and get our help set up our program so we can have a downtown designation. So that's in the works.
Can I ask a question?
No, then that's...
Does that rewriting of the zoning ordinances include the updates?
It will, yes.
There are many.
I have a question, since I'm on the planning division and we're doing that, like working on the zoning ordinances. Are you saying that the regional planning is taking that away from us? That we're not, that they're supporting it? Like, I'm just trying to...
Supporting.
Supporting, okay.
And just overall, I know I've taken a lot of your time. All of our, all of our projects have seemed to kind of shake loose lately. Everything was waiting with the state or the Fed or the courts. And everything seems to just picked up. So thank goodness, things are chugging along.
Okay, questions for Joe?
Can you also give us, where are we on, what's the new funds that are coming in next year?
Yeah.
Which you...
Yeah, ARPA.
$750,000.
Yeah, what's, we are going to have some sort of public hearing or something.
Yeah.
I was going to say this for Auntie, but why not? There are other towns in other states that are actually, you know, sending out mailers saying, voters, come give us input so that everybody gets a real fair shot at throwing out ideas.
Yeah, we need to have, yeah, we need to have public hearings.
Based on how well attended our public hearings are, I just thought maybe another method might bear some thought.
They just did the town fair, so they just spent a full day on Monday on ARPA. And there's a lot of, not only the public hearings where people are coming, but they're talking flyers that they send out, other ways, reaching out multiple ways is what they're recommending. Spot on, yeah.
Good, other questions?
Nope, just about on your radar.
Okay, old business, that permit review. I know at our last meeting, Joe was going to reach back out and, is there an update on permit fees, square footage, any of that that we had asked?
There is no update. We did have to stop the permit process when we asked for the review of that. They did send me, they did send me some information, but the numbers were wrong. They were different than the original permit fee. So I just did, and they didn't respond. So the numbers were wrong, it didn't, it didn't equal the permit fee that they had told us before. And they didn't answer the question of, are we still being charged for the buffer zone even though the grass is cut? Which, what they sent me seemed to say yes, but they didn't explicitly say, yes, you're being charged for this. So I have an email back out to Dory asking her explicitly, what, what is the fee for this area?
Why, why do we have to go through Dory? I know she's our contractor, but isn't that where maybe some of the conflicting information is coming from? You're, why can't we go directly to Zapata and ask?
So I would say that there is not, there is no conflicting information.
You just send it once.
There's, there's a discrepancy in the numbers, but that could just be an error in that.
Conflicting, okay.
I mean, that's, but no, we can't go to Dory, we can't go to Zapata because Zapata can't give us the information and then rule on her information. There has to be a checks and balances in their department. That's just what they told me. So we go through Dory, she's our contractor, she develops it, she submits an application. We can't ask the state to develop the application for us and then submit it for us.
I didn't think we were asking her to develop the application, we were just looking for clarification. At this point.
I will send her an email.
I mean, at this point, isn't that what we're doing, we're asking for clarification?
Yes. From, I mean, from our contractor, this is the person that does this.
Okay, so...
But I can surely send Zapata an email and ask.
If you're just asking for clarification, then I would think that Zapata could answer, or could clarify directly.
But my only question, the bigger question for me is, the permit hasn't been sent in because we're looking for clarification in weeks and over weeks have gone by. I feel some of the frustration. So my question is, if at the end of the day, the permit's going to cost $8,600 and the detail that we're asking right here, if that, if we know that it's going to cost $8,000, and I don't know if we do know that, I'm going to assume we know that.
We know that, that's what the number is as applied for. But we just talked at the last meeting that we're not, they have no intention or they feel that there is very little chance that many of things are ever going to be done. So we said, well, let's get a real number of what we're going to do.
I don't think it matters.
Right, I guess the point that I'm trying to make here is, we need to get an application for a permit. In. And that means we all, we need to make a decision as a board around that whole question of, hey, it's going to cost whether it's $8,000, $6,000, it's going to, it's going to cost it. And we... It's gonna, it's gonna cost, and we don't have enough money, even if we take money that raised, uh, from the Dog Park Committee, we don't have enough money to get there. And before that can be sent in, we need to.
Have a plan.
Talk about how we're gonna pay for that. Now, that's what, that's the type of discussion I'd like to see us have as a board.
Whether it's $8,000 or $3,000 or $25, whatever the number is, it's still gotta be, it's still gotta be paid for. And you've gotta have the check attached to the permit when you sign it.
No.
Oh.
Yes.
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 Usually, yeah, she has to pay the work money.
And if we sent a check in for $8,600 and we find out after that we didn't need that, I, I don't, I don't even wanna ask that, probably. You can, we'll get, we can amend permit and get.
Probably.
Well, I mean, there's gotta be, so, so the real question comes back again, forgetting about what are we, how are we gonna pay for it? And that's the one I.
I think when you amend the permit, you have to pay another fee, and it's actually quite expensive, so you really wanna get it straight from the start. And what I really don't understand, I'm sorry, you look at the website, they tell you there's a base fee of $300, I think it's $375. It's 75 cents per square foot, impact on wetland, 25 cents per square foot of impact on the buffer. That's very clear, but there's so many square feet where it, I cannot understand how it is impact on the buffer to continue mowing or mowing an area that would previously be mowing and you put a fence next to it. So, I really don't understand why, it's two weeks later, Joe says, nope, there's no clarification. It's not that hard to ask the wetlands management people, sorry, what, what, why is this being considered an impact? I mean, come on, we have donors that pay $250 each to have advertising on the fence for their business that may, for all we know, because COVID, those businesses might be out of business by the time the Dog Park opens. And they're understanding why it would be open this year, we just.
So, discussion from the board on ideas and options to pay for the permit. I mean, we've talked about the other stuff hundreds of times, it is what it is at this point. Now we need to figure out how to pay for the, the permit. I know you guys don't like the options, but it is what it is, it's where we're at. You know, we have a permit to pay for, let's talk about how we can pay for it. Are there options?
When are we gonna find out when, what the actual price is gonna be? Two weeks ago, we talked about, um, getting the price of the permit down because.
We just talked about that.
All these structures that aren't, that will probably never be put in.
Correct, but we just talked about that. It could be $8,200, $8,500, or it might be $25.
It, you, you can't tell me that there's not someone at Wetlands Management who can tell us why the number they're giving Joe is the number. They're calculating it in some way.
We've just discussed that already, Joe gave us an answer. Obviously, you don't like the answer, but you gave an answer on it.
He didn't show you the numbers.
Yes, he did, he just talked about it.
He talked about it, he said the numbers didn't match the other numbers, he did not give you the numbers or anything.
So, I'm gonna ask the board again, uh, keep the conversation of the board, please. Options to pay for the permit, what are you guys thinking of how we wanna pay for it? If we wanna pay for it, and what, Glenn, do you have?
I'll throw something out that you can kick around.
Yep, go ahead.
Good at that.
No, but, but I think, I think that the feedback around whether our taxpayers feel they should have to pay for a wetland permit, I, I feel pretty strongly that without getting more input, I've heard enough, that a lot of taxpayers are saying, I support a dog park, I won't support my tax dollars paying for any permit. So, what I'm saying is, we need the permit, we need to start using the dog park. So, would it be unreasonable to take what we can, that, from the Dog Park Committee? The ten on weather, and we saw the different options, I like the option of taking, uh, the balance from the grant match, putting it together, and put it with a permit request and get that permit out there. So I've got the, whatever the timing that, that's going there, I, out of looking at the different options, that's the one I like. What that would mean is that we're fronting the money for the permit and, I, would I be asking the Dog Park Committee, would they be willing to, as we go into 2022? I know it's been a long year, but we do things that we continue to do, look for opportunities for fundraise, to try to make it where the impact on the taxpayers is, is back towards negligible, uh, there. Because I go back to the very beginning of when we decided to put a dog park in, one of the reasons I supported the dog park was, I didn't see where it was gonna cost the taxpayers anything additional. And that's, that's changing, so I wanna be, I, I wanna be sensitive to the fact that, hey, wait a minute, did we, did we get, uh, the, the right forum and get input for taxpayer dollars? I don't think we, we did. So, that's my, my proposal's take the money from the grant match, take, put it together, and whatever, whether it's $8,000, $6,000, or $4,000, get that permit in and get the timing going so that, once, I would feel a little more comfortable, I understand Joe when he says, well, I'm worried about the big, large fines and what Carol said. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we were using the dog park and just not doing anything, that we had a paid-for permit in and going through the process. Sitting here and open the gates and using the dog park without even having the permit being sent with a check, that's, I think I agree with Joe, that's a little more risk than I, I wanna take. I, I'd be willing to discuss the risk if I had that permit in the process, they had it. And I was having a very open, frank conversation, whether it is with Zapata or whoever, saying, here's what we're doing, we think we're on the side of the angels, tell me. I, I, and I want it in writing, by the way, I want it in an email, tell me, I'm like, it looks, and I, I've looked at some of that. But that's, but that's my feelings, now let you.
Do we have any sense for how long it'll take to get the permit, once it's sent in?
Two months.
Which is what you told us three months ago, that it'd take two months, and so we should have a permit, and it's still not even.
Linda, I'm sorry, I'm not the state.
I know you're not the state.
I don't make these decisions.
I know.
I, I, I send it in.
But you're the one that's decided to close the park, and you're talking about the committee raising money into 2022. They've donated all this money and nobody can even walk in the gate, according to you.
Yes.
And you expect us to continue raising money, plus, you, you're talking about seizing the money that has already been donated for a specific purpose. So even saying, okay, if you take half that money, that will get what we told the people we were doing, and then the other half, because I really think with the, the coin drop money, you're still looking at about $5,000.
And even though people are also looking at all this going on, and people are hearing, oh, the dog park, you can't use it, um, people are spec, like, I heard my fiance went and talked to, he was, he's, I can't remember how it came up, but somebody said, oh, the dog park, isn't that basically dead? I mean, no one can use it, I mean, I bet their property gonna end up pulling investments out of there, like, this is the kinda stuff people are saying. So, when you are saying to us, oh, go out and fundraise some more, people are, are like, what the hell is going on with the dog park?
All right, sorry I asked a question.
So Glenn has an idea on the table?
Yeah.
Is there other, I mean, other proposals, other thoughts?
Well, uh, I, I guess I don't agree with using the grant match because that was voted on by the voters to put that money in for the purpose of matching grants for necessary infrastructure improvements. That particular, uh, fund is ver, most of these funds are very specific as to what the voters approved that money to be for. And I, I, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but I don't see this as a necessary infrastructure requirement. There are roads that are not paved, uh, and people are complaining every day about that. There's, Adam Street, just, you can throw a, a jello against a tree and it'll all stick because there's so many programs out there that we cannot fund. And we're gonna tell the voters that we decided to use the money for a dog park instead of the necessary, you know, you, you voted for us to use the money for a certain way, and we just said, we interpreted it differently. I don't agree with it, sorry. Not, at least not the grant match. I mean, I, I don't know that I have. It's, it's not an emergency, I, I don't see it coming out of the emergency fund, it's not a sidewalk, it's not. I, I don't know that I have the answer, but I just know that I've been on the board long enough to put money in those, those funds and, and tell people, we are going to use this money for exactly what you are voting it for. And I have a tough time looking any voter in the face and say, you know, we interpreted this, this was a necessary thing. It, it's not even a match. I'm not, I'm not criticizing your choice, I'm just saying, this is not a match to what the voters approved.
What about, what about an option of the recreation account? You know, there's money that was set aside for recreation, we're never gonna rebuild a building down back there.
At least.
It's expanding recreation up to the airport.
We, we, as I understand it, and, and that's a better ma, a better match, however, as I understand it, when, when that went through voters, and we should probably research the, the year that was voted on. But we took the money from the burned-down building.
And put it in that account.
And put it in that account for a building. I don't have an issue with using that money, okay, and I can look the voters in the face and say, we did the right thing. If we get their approval and say, i- if the voters say, that's a great idea, let's do that. I wholeheartedly agree, but at this point, if we, any, any monies that we use contrary to what the voters approved. So, I, I think that's a, a good idea if we just review what, what the vote was, what the language of the vote was. I know, I, I don't think it was, you were here, so you'd have to go back into your predecessors.
That's not all necessarily from that building.
I, I know, but, well, what, how much is from the previous? You know, I, I would hesitate to dip into the building portion, but the other stuff. The recreation fund is probably the best match. This is the closest thing to a recreation thing.
So, if I heard you correct, are you saying if we saw there was money there, we might, you, you still would want to go and ask the voters in March to spend the money?
No, no, I was only talking about the building funds. Let's just say there was $5,000 in that fund before the building monies went in.
Okay.
Okay, then that $5,000 is, is, I don't, to tell you, I don't know where that money came from, I personally don't. But the monies that I've been involved in since 2009, I know what we asked the voters to approve, and.
Okay.
What's, what's Joe's argument?
So, I, I actually talked to the accountant about the wrecked building, um, account, because that, that money is just sitting there. Uh, and we came across the same issue that Rod's talking about. I think some of that was insurance money from the burnt building, um, but we did replace, not a snatch check, but we did replace the building and we used some of those funds, so. It's great, I like, I like that idea, let's look it up and see.
I mean, you're building infrastructure in a place that's not, it's recreation, but it's not, it's not in the same place, but it's still.
But, but there was money in that, uh, we put that into an existing fund, the building. So if we don't touch the building, what, the remains of the building, uh, portion, I, I think we're safer, and Jenny's been here the longest, so she, she knows, she put the, I mean, she has all the records as to why the monies went into those accounts. So, I mean, that certainly is an open window.
But, uh, to the grant match, I would, I would say that if somebody gives us money, I think it would be acceptable to, to match those funds. I don't know what the language looks like to establish that fund, but it would, if it said for only, only necessary infrastructure, that would tend to, that would close the door. But if it just said to match, match other funds or match grants, I can see that being a problem.
My, my idea would be that the dog park helps in our marketing and, and enticing people to buy homes, come to Fairhaven and live because of the fact that they want a dog park. So I think you can, from an economic development standpoint, I would, I would be willing to answer the taxpayer who's concerned about the grant match money going there and saying, no, we do a lot of things, we can imagine most of it is to, the grant match money we're using for the parking down here in the rain garden, that's to bring people in here to, to live, to spend money, just like the dog park. I, I think it's just one of the many things that we do.
One's more federal money, one's more private.
This one here, granted, private donation versus getting a federal grant, you're, we're probably stretching the definition.
No, yeah, I, I, I was, I, I was on the board when we created that fund. And, yeah, Jeff was too, uh, I'm not sure you were, Chris, at that time, I think that was probably before you. I mean, I, we made promises, you know, of what, what kinda projects it would be used for, and, you know.
Well, I thought it was general grants.
What, what year was it?
Yeah, grants, though, we're not talking about grant and.
Ten, early July.
Yeah, I think match, though, for funds, the sticky part is we didn't say it in the beginning. That's the only sticky part for me.
But, uh, question, how much? Well, I, how much money have, have we spent on the, has been spent, uh, on the dog park so far? You have a rough number?
The article said $18,000 or something, right?
I, I've got a, a spreadsheet going of what was in the account, what we needed to purchase, some things went on the town credit card, some things got a purchase order, so everything had not been, and I'm still sitting on a couple hundred dollars worth of stuff that I purchased and was in a hurry to get paid for, but now you're, you're using the money and I'm going, yeah. There's only so much I wanna donate to the playground and the dog park, and I've reached my limit, and then so. So, but the way I figured it was that we probably had almost $3,500 after everything was paid, and then another $1680 or something for the coin drop. So I was thinking, there should be about $5,000 in there.
Okay, but how much have we spent so far? How much was the fence?
We spent for like fence and everything, we must've spent well over $10,000.
Yeah, the fence itself was close to $10,000, and then the construction of it was $5,000 something.
Fifteen and change.
Yeah, and then you talk 800 inventions, you talk, um, $450 for county state, yeah. Of course, the money that we drew in, like a thousand of it went back into sponsor signs. So even though we raised the money, you still had to buy the sponsor signs after that point, so.
So, is it, is it about $20,000? Um, and how, how much is, um, and, and we're looking at 28, yeah, today's numbers, 28 number, it's 28. How much was originally earmarked for permits?
We didn't know what the permit was, it was.
So there was no, none of this money was supposed to go to the permits?
No.
We always know, we knew there was, as soon as we started talking wetlands, we knew there was a permit.
Yeah, we knew there'd be a permit, but there was no opportunity to, which is frustrating, because we started this process in March.
I'm just asking, were there any dollars set aside for permits?
Not, not through the town.
Okay. I, I just think that, you know, we, this board, and, and actually, not this board, not yet, but the previous board, the previous boards complain about the, the voters voting in appropriations. Okay, this is just another appropriation that is not voted on. Just my two cents.
Okay, others? Jeff, do you have any ideas?
Nothing any better than I've heard. I was looking for, uh, like a permit line or something like that, but out of the budget. I was looking for like a permit line or something like that, but out of the budget to finance it.
Unfortunately, they're, they're part of the project, there's no, yeah.
That's what I've been looking for.
So there is, although maybe unpopular with the Economic Development Committee. There's $4,000 sitting there. If we call, if we're calling this economic development and it will draw people to town, there's 4,000, 4,500 sitting there. That would cover half.
And what was the purpose of that money?
Just economic development, general.
Just general economic development projects? And that's a, a fund?
It's a budget line item.
Oh, okay. In this year's budget, in the current budget?
That gets you posted later.
Between our 4,000 and our 6,000, we're within 2,000. Well, but it makes the fundraising more doable when you figure next, one coin, coin drop next year and.
I'd like to be optimistic and say that the 8,000 is gonna be closer to 6,000, five or 6,000. Joe, Jeff doesn't agree with me, and, and one of us is right.
Joe doesn't agree.
I think, I think we pushed them in 8,600.
And it may go up. I, I actually think by, I think by pushing them, it may go up.
I, right.
Agreed, but I think that's more likely where we're headed.
Push, we're not, we're not pushing them, we're just trying to make the application accurate.
No, uh, which sheet do you want?
So we're within 1,000. 1,600, we're within 1,600?
You could just overexpend the airport, airport line and then you're done.
Wait.
There is 800 in the airport.
Yep.
You'd have to overexpend because you're not gonna have enough to cover it. But, yeah, you could do most of this out of the budget and then using the EDC money.
Airport budget, EDC money and a couple of other.
Are we gonna step on other EDC toes?
Sure.
Well, I, oh yeah, I mean, we're, we're just, we're just.
Why, why?
I just resigned yesterday, so it worked well, yes.
That 5,000 was probably a website design.
So what do you have, 4,500?
That would have been our website redesign.
What did you say, Joe, 4,500? Five, there's 5,000 for the economic development right now, in, in this year's budget.
Right there. Oh, okay.
So can we take 5,000 from there and then some other portion?
And then overrun the airport budget, when it has 800 in it, so it's 5,800?
Or the recreation.
If the town gives 5,000, I would hope that someone else is gonna toe the line.
I'm still looking. If, if the town comes up with 5, can the park committee come up with the other 3, 36?
Oh, we have some ready.
All right, we already have some.
Yeah, we have it. And the point was, the point was just being flat out told that, that the account was frozen and it was gonna pay for the permit was what was the get, what, I mean, it just, when you raise money for one thing, it's the same as what he was saying about, you know, raising money and you're liable to the town people that you're not spending it on something else. And we felt that that's exactly what you were doing to us, having us say to the people, okay, I'm sorry, you know, we raised this money for these great structures, but the town has taken it and now we have to keep raising so that you can have what you already gave us money for.
That's the 1,600 though. That's what you did at the coin drop.
Well, well, that and, and he posts back in July, when I post, or June, when I posted, we had the money for the gates, we are fencing, we had this and that, so now we're raising money for the garden and the play structures. Again, in July, the posts on the dog park pages, that's what we're getting.
But we're all victims of this permit. I mean, it's not an us or them.
I guess putting some of it towards the permit, but I have, I have a question just about the idea of using the EDC fund, of course. Aren't you gonna have to run that by the other EDC members?
Look, there's, there's still, all we're doing is showing our profitability, because you'd have to sit with the EDC, but you, you've got two of the board members in here saying, and say that, okay, because was that money possibly or not for website design? It could happen anywhere between.
Right.
And the EDC would just spend a year and a half talking about how to develop Fairhaven as a recreational destination. So I could imagine the members being.
It might be a match.
I think they, I think that the board would, would probably.
We'll, we'll know if Glenn comes back shot full of arrows.
What it, what it may do is push back EDC's plans a year.
Well, well, what we do is because in July 1, we get new funding, instead of doing web, website makeover in the first half of 22, 2022, we do it in the second half. So, still gonna get done, you're having to get done with new, hopefully in the new budget cycle, we're gonna be done.
The website's bad, it was.
Apparently, I, I hadn't heard anything.
Your silence has been.
Noted.
No, your silence has been deafening.
I don't have anything better to suggest, I think. Just move ahead probably with Joe's suggestion and see where we get.
So can we do it this way though, to save the money if there, you know, we could take 5,000 from the EDC? But if Joe looks into the recreation reserve and that's an acceptable use of 5,000 taken from there instead?
Maybe take half from EDC and half from the reserve. I mean, it doesn't have to be all or nothing.
I'll leave that up to Joe to research the reserve and I'll post some information about the.
That's the detail we can work out to get there and it gives me time to talk to the EDC. But also, the goal here is to get a permit.
Correct.
Filled out, a check written with it and to get it sent in. So that should be the goal.
Yeah, and so what's the timeline on that? Is that coming out of this meeting and Joe sends that permit in with a check by the next one? Or are we coming back next meeting to finalize that the EDC's okay and then? I know we need to finalize.
I'm confident that we're going, that we're gonna get there. I don't know how, I, I can't tell you all the, the minute detail.
But I can't write that check until we get there. Right?
We've, we've, if we feel confident that we have the monies, whether it's EDC.
To piece it together.
You kinda, you kinda have to, when you write a check.
Motion, I gotta say.
Right. To write the check, you need to know.
I know Jenny won't write that check without the motion saying where the money's coming from.
Right, right. And she's very right to.
Absolutely.
So, so it sounds like as much as we'd like to.
When's the next EDC meeting?
I think you gotta wait two weeks.
Oh, well, we, EDC doesn't meet until the first Monday of every month, so it'll be November 1st.
You could be called special.
Oh, I can, well, I can get ahold of electronically, see if you want to special. It's a very quick, my thing, dude, but what I'm looking at is we wait till, at our next board meeting, which is starting in two weeks, we have, understanding, I don't mean to put Joe on the gun because you're on vacation for a week, right? So, there's not a whole lot of time to get things there. Can we be ready for our next meeting?
I got a little question. Okay, it sounds like it's probably gonna be another month before the permit gets submitted, correct?
At least two, at least.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is what they're talking.
Because it really sounds like it's gonna be another month.
Another two board meetings.
You know how government works, it's, it's at least a month to.
All right, so if, if it's not in, if it has not been submitted, can't you just say, okay folks, we got a month of fall, you can go in the dog park and then we're closing it and we're waiting for the permit because it hasn't been submitted? Why can't we do that? Give the, give the people something for some kind of good faith thing so we can raise money. I mean, we were willing to work towards getting money for the permit so the town doesn't have to foot it all, but you just haven't given the people who have donated any sign of good faith, like, you know, here, plant it for a month, just don't add gravel, don't, don't do anything, don't mow, don't, just, just take your dog in.
You can communicate with the people and, and say, hey, so be very careful to, you know, only bring your dog in room, don't bring in any equipment, we cannot put any gravel.
I'm sure they would be happy to.
But again, I just wanna say, when you say we haven't done anything in good faith, I take exception to that. Because we've, we've spent so much time in the last three months working on dog park, when there's some major issues in this town that we should be working forward that we can't because we spent an hour last meeting. Well, quite a bit, we've been spending hours and hours on this right here, so I'm saying, no, we have been giving this good faith effort is, is.
Okay, I'm sorry, I maybe misspoke on that. It just seems like everything has been nitpicked to death and some things really didn't need to be. I just feel like we've been treated as a special interest group because we're doing the dog park, not that it's part of the town, there's something that the town wants. And, and it's unfortunate we've had to spend so much on it, but, yeah, that's what it works out.
But to answer your question about can't you go in there, I stand by what I said earlier that until that permit, I wouldn't even consider it until that check is written and the permit's been filled out and it's been sent in and it's in.
Which way?
Someone's hands before, and I don't know, if you still would, I wouldn't wanna, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
In order to be able to use it.
I know, I know we've had differences with this. I don't, I don't wanna be, I don't want us, because it's not just gonna be me on the cover of the newspaper, it's gonna be us showing how we have to pay 15,000 dollars if we did something, just, we shouldn't. And this has received so much media attention, I mean, every week there's a newspaper article. That they, the, the state knows we're doing this and they know there's conflict and they know there's no permit.
Right.
It's gonna take one thing and then the permit's doubled and here's your fine. And I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just not willing.
I would argue that the dog park goes away if there is a violation and we gotta pay 15,000 dollar fee.
You don't have to pay it.
Well, we, we'd have to pay it, but it's, it, it kills the dog park.
So Jeff, do you have a motion?
Yeah.
That's a good segue.
Good segue, yeah. For discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we finance the permit with, give me a little leeway on this, but 30, 2,500 from the EDC, 2,500 from the rec, um, um, fund and the balance to come hopefully from the dog park. Are you?
And hopefully at a lower cost.
Hopefully at a lower cost, um, because we need to say where the funds are coming from for the motion. And, and that would be submitted in the next two weeks? Can we submit a permit in the next two weeks? Can you?
Does the board want me to submit a permit in two weeks?
So you're saying, do, do we want, we want you to do it as is?
Do you, do you want me to submit this permit? It's, there's the tire run, there's the, everything that was in 6B, whatever version that was. 6B is, is it 8,600 dollars if you were to take?
Do you believe that it's gonna make any difference on that permit fee to change it and pull out that stuff?
It's 75 cents per square foot, so if there's a tire that's this big, it's gonna be a few dollars.
The only issue I saw was the buffer area and that's in question. But we don't have an answer and whether we submit or not, it doesn't change the buffer area. What, you're not gonna change the buffer area? The fencing area is fencing area.
Jeff has a motion.
I'll second your motion.
I think Jeff's motion was to pay up to 5,000 dollars for the dog park permit fee of half out of the EDC fund and the other half out of the recreation reserve account.
And to work with the dog park committee to, to finish up the rest.
A discussion on that motion.
What, what, what's Joe's marching orders on the permit?
I could be in trouble if I didn't.
Yeah.
It, it all depends on that.
When you said two weeks, when you said two weeks, is there any way that permit can be filled out and sent before, you know, the next day or two?
I will work on it tomorrow.
Before, because you're gonna be gone for a week, so that's what I'm saying, maybe we can get that in with the next week.
But I then ask, or so we're go, we're, we're comfortable with the 86, or 8, 8,000 and change, I don't know the exact number.
I'm not comfortable with it, I just don't, where I'm coming from is I don't think it's gonna change.
I don't think it's gonna, and we're gonna cover anything in the future, because we've covered for more than, than what we did probably ever. And we'll be covered, there's, we're not gonna worry about the future.
Well, that's, that's where I'm coming from on the permit, the whole time, is it's done. And you can have a very nice, the dog park can be what it.
Everybody wants it.
Until you do something outside of, because you couldn't imagine today what you would be doing tomorrow and you do the wrong thing relative to the application and you're in the same boat either way.
Which is what happened to children, they thought they were doing the right thing.
Right. The, the problem is that we all disappear.
Yes, yes.
And peoples change, except for the state level, and they've got all the records and, you know, it's a difference in interpretation and that's why I, I would.
Send in a bare permit.
Just what you want to do today and for 375 or 350, whatever, you put another permit in, you go, it's already wetlands, it's never gonna disappear from wetlands.
No, I.
So, you know, but at least then you don't cross the line. You know, if you wanna do something else, there's no interpretation, you will be told, but.
I don't have any problem with pulling those extras out of the permit if that's what you wanna do.
That's all I'm, it's a pros and cons.
Things like the water you were gonna actually do. So I didn't think there were that many things in that permit. I've, I've heard very mixed messages here. I didn't think there were that many things in that permit that you weren't actually gonna do.
There were some extra structures, like wood, wood play structures.
Things like that. But they were all gonna have gravel in it, it's not just the footprint of the structure, it's the gravel footprint.
Right, yeah.
I, I still don't think it will materially change that 8,600.
8,000, it might change 100, 200, which.
Which is fine, if you wanna pull them, if you wanna pull them out, it's just a little more work for.
If, if it's only 75 cents a square foot, how did it get from 375 for the base?
Because we're all counting 2,500, there's like 2,500 square feet that we're counting in a different way than they are.
I, I don't understand.
Correct?
Why the weapon is counting every single square foot that's enclosed by the fences impact on the wetland because the wrecking fence, mowing according to the existing regime is an impact, so.
But you're, you're not gonna, but you're not gonna mow it according to the existing regime. You're gonna mow it like once a week.
No, but the lower half or lower third of it that was already being mowed, why are we being charged?
For some reason, they are not accounting for that, I don't.
Right, and that's, that's where I think it comes into play, that, that you're cutting, they're assuming that you're cutting all of the grass once a week.
Right, I, I get that, but I.
But that's an impact then.
But a third of the area at least was already being mowed, so that's a third of the cost, like when you're talking about the square foot, footage, that's a lot of money.
She's, I think they're saying.
It was not.
Now, I'm making this up in my, in my head, so don't hold me to this. I think they're saying. You shouldn't have been doing that. You shouldn't have mowed that. It's all wetland, it's still wetland, it was wetland and here's your 75 cent bill.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
I think that's, you're kinda getting your hand slapped.
Okay, all favor the motion?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. And Joe will move forward with the permit.
I will work extremely diligently to put this behind us. Even if I have to call from out of, out of the country, this is gonna happen.
It does, so do the best you can, it doesn't need to be in tomorrow.
All right, just standing on you. Thank you everybody.
Um, sorry.
No. I'm doing my best.
So based on everything you guys said about allowing people in.
So based on everything you guys said about allowing people in, we can get the, you know, you basically have said, okay, so you cannot use the dog park until it's moved in. So we have to.
We have to.
It looks up there, you go up there and it looks beautiful and people have been going and using it and then I guess, you know, some people watch the meetings or, you know, but like people hear what's going on. And so we just want to be clear, like if you all really do feel that it's that important that people stay out.
Then it needs to be locked and a sign put on.
Yeah, we have, we have to, and, and I know that can be a problem. Like if we put it in a, in a nice way, that like the permit process is going through, don't worry about it, you will be able to use the dog park.
I think we should wait at least, I'm with Glenn, until the permit is in.
Does it need to be actually locked or can we just?
That we, that we validate the.
Or, or we're going to lock it, how about that?
And that, that's the two weeks that, the decision we just made here, we need if you, if you can, about a couple of weeks to get, make that, get that, make sure that's in. And so that hopefully at our next meeting, we can, we can let you know.
So then do you want us just to kind of put the word out that, hey, if you're moving forward, we need to lock it?
Right, just.
Just tell people, please don't go in there, but for the next couple of weeks?
But I mean, that's.
What's the message to people?
I thought you said something.
I, we've received a lot of media attention, it would be nice, because it's not bad positive. It's not, let's, let's be honest, I've been beat up and name called, kind of a lot.
Well, you sounded very good in the art class.
Yeah.
Not true.
I didn't get that. I thought they were fairly biased against you.
It would be really nice if we would stop screaming about the dog park and just let the process go.
But we do have to say something to people.
Just, just let, just let it happen.
So if somebody's in the dorm or that we don't have to say. Well, you got to get out now?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying maybe it would be nice if it wasn't in the media every meeting.
We're not going to have to the media, the question is, what do we tell people we want to use the dog park? They have, they're all these.
Tell, ask them to please leave.
I would, I would just go and I'd give Raj right on the money to say, please, we, we don't want to get in trouble and, and, and just give us, we need just a little more time and we're getting this dog park open just as soon as we possibly can.
So do we say the permit is hopefully going in in the next couple of weeks?
That as soon as we hear that the permit is, is, is there and, and been given permission to, to use it, believe we will, will be communicating.
Okay, because, just because at the moment people are thinking, ah, the park park is closed and you cannot use it, we want to know what do we say to people, we want to, we don't want, because we don't.
It's currently not available until the permit has been applied for.
Submitted.
Submitted.
But no sign, no lock, just.
Right, I wouldn't make a huge issue, because if you, if you see someone there, say, please, you're putting us at risk and we're almost there, we're almost to finish.
Because if you go up there and you look at it, it looks like it's open, so that's, that's the question, just like what do we do then? Okay, anyway, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your patience.
Uh, park ordinance review. So this, that's a good one, review, I mean, we've talked about this, but this is.
So this came, this came up, just for quick recap, this came up when the school asked if we could limit people entering the, the playground area behind the school during school hours with the reason that it's kind of a safety threat for the children to have people just kind of roaming around down there. There's language in here to that effect and while we had the document open, we also added a few things. We had the air park and the dog park and a few changes that the police chief thought would be good to have. Those are highlighted in yellow in the document.
So to Glenn's point, I mean, this is review for the board, if there's any changes we want, but then we all, we have to have a public hearing as well. Correct.
How, how can you have.
It would be good to have a public hearing, I think, yes.
How can you have the park and the playground calls from nine to three? And here we are talking about spending all this money on new playground equipment for our children that they found in use.
I think that was debated at a prior select board meetings, a month or so ago.
Well, I guess, just that our kids are going to get.
I know, John, that conversation's already happened though, I mean.
Well, and it may come again.
It may come again at, at the public hearings, by all means, it might come again.
It came down to this, creating a safe space always for the kids.
Safe space is home by private landowner on the other side of the road, it comes around the ball field. Is that any game, is this property?
I know.
Do they have a right of way into the property?
There's the rule.
And they have a right of way into the property, then if that's true. We'll do some research on it.
In, in reviewing the, the ordinance, I know we're jumping around a little bit, different places. I, I just feel as long as we're, we're going through the ordinance and we're doing policy reviews, this, we're going to check, this is one that we're going to review, we won't have to go back again. On the first paragraph, when it talks about the pavilion that's no longer down there, I'd like to, and I'll give you the copy that I marked up, delete where it referenced pavilion.
It's the.
Or where are they talking?
There's a covered, big covered forest, forest structure.
Yeah, that's still there.
Oh, it's still, okay, forget, I said that.
You were thinking of the.
I'm thinking of the snack, I thought you were talking of the snack shack that was there. But if, if there's a pavilion, you're good. Second paragraph, it looks like we amended twenty twenty-one, you, you put, when you amend the paragraphs or sections, so it looks like when you add the air park and dog park here, that's amended twenty twenty-one again. Next paragraph amended twenty twenty-one. Page two, when we talked, when a couple of select board meetings ago, Brooke came in and brought logic for wanting to have no trespassing from nine to three, was I look at number eight of our conditions and limitations for this ordinance and it says that, you know, no persons in the park or recreation field shall engage in loud voices threatening abusive play. It seems like the things that we were trying to address in closing it are already addressed in the policy. And so I, I, again, and even, I think at that meeting, I made a comment of, why don't we have a dusk to dawn? Well, the policy already has it between dusk and dawn, in any of our parks, you're not supposed to be there. Only thing I, when I saw that, I just went, put in a, a number ten, the new ordinance about no trespassing from nine to three, I don't see where it was needed, we just, if we put a new one in, we're not going to enforce it any better than we're enforcing the one we have.
Well, the policy can't be enforced by law, as law, but ordinance is enforced by law, as law.
But this, but this ordinance without number ten says you can't do those things here. That, that was when I asked you, why, why are we even bothering doing change? And she gave the example of, of the unsayable person or whatever, or the individual.
It's already in here.
It's already there.
Number eight.
We already have it.
Eight, nine.
Yeah.
So, so putting a, a new one in there, it's like, no, just, just enforce the ordinance that we have.
Be redone.
That, and the only reason I'm, I'm throwing that out there is to say, we're talking public meetings and everything else and I'm saying, if you don't have to take that battle on, why are you taking that battle on? Agree? I.
And it's clear by who they can.
Oh, it's.
The last sentence of number eight.
Of number eight, it's, well, and then when you look at the enforcement.
Just call Bill, he does it.
Right, and then when you look in the enforcement, they've got the, what you do and the penalties and everything. We have, it, it looked like a pretty good ordinance. We just got to.
And it puts the ordinance on our law enforcement to deal with the problem.
Because even with number ten in there, it still is the same, you, same thing. You call the police, they come in and they do what's, it says in the ordinance, so.
So the two examples, the two examples that I, I recall hearing were, there was one gentleman out back chipping golf balls with his shirt off and there was a couple playing tennis.
I, I thought it was basketball player with that shirt off, but it's the same, same principle.
So under, under that idea though, I don't think there's a violation. Like you can be out on chipping golf balls and, you know, the police can't, shouldn't, the police shouldn't come and escort you off, off the grass.
There wouldn't be, as long as it's not.
As long as it's not chipping it towards the kids, I would hope that.
Never know.
No, I just thought it was a good first step to at least enforce our ordinance that we have and see if that solves the problem, it's a, and, you know, I, I fielded several calls on this one. So it's, it's, I don't know that it's a slam dunk.
Fielded several calls, what do you mean?
On the closing it from nine to three.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm not sure it's a slam dunk that.
I mean, John had the same comment.
Exactly, so.
I believe we'll fill the room in a public meeting if, if we go ahead with.
Right, so, yeah.
Why, why buy all that equipment if you're not going to have it?
Well, it is, I know you don't want to go down this road, but it is going to be there for the kids. The kids are going to, the kids are going to be using it during nine to three. It's, that's what it's there for, is the kids. It's just, I'm not going to go down and use it between nine and three, I have to wait until four, right? With my, if I want to take my kids down after.
That's how I understand.
I can do it after, I just can't keep them home for the day and say, we're going to go to the playground today.
What about the first story?
Through my, right, through my discussion, I'm the stay-at-home mom and my kids aren't in school and I want to go down and swing and use, swing. I don't build and, and the answer was, well, you contact us and get permission.
Permission.
As I, as a taxpayer, I outrage that, that you'd, you'd ask me to do that. As someone who's not, I'm not in, I'm, I'm a, I'm a teen who's out of, or I'm out of school and I want to go down and shoot some hoops at the basketball court. As long as I'm not doing any of the prohibited things that are here, why shouldn't I be able to? I, I'm.
I don't know, I stopped down there, did it, so this, we, we're on, we're off, so I'll focus on.
You're not, you're fine?
No.
But there, I, I still, even with the nine to three, I think that the aim of that playground equipment is for the kids and the kids will still be able to use that.
The in-school kids.
The in-school kids.
But.
Which is a large portion of the.
Yeah, 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 I'm not dis, I'm not saying you're wrong, just, you know, it's.
My question, another question.
You're right.
What has happened if we don't want adults down there from nine to three?
Well, but that's not for us to ask. People have vacation time. If they have vacation time and they want to go down and shoot some hoops, that's when they're down there.
People walk for a walk, they live in the houses on Main Street and they go for a walk. I mean, those are the.
I don't know.
I, I, again, I just.
I, I like, I really like the idea of enforcing our existing ordinance and seeing how that goes. I would also like for Joe to reach out to Brooke and just make sure that she doesn't have any overreaching concerns.
Right, if there was something that wasn't.
That we, we're missing.
Well, I, I have to believe that the, what she's requesting is that she doesn't want to have to call the police all the time.
Except she was going to have to anyway.
She was going to have to if anyone goes down there.
If anybody questioned it.
But, no, no, you're, you're right, you're right, but at least the, you know, from her perspective, that's why we put up a sign, no admittance, I'm, I'm talking from her perspective.
Yes.
I, I think that's what she was, no admittance and, and it's very clear. And, and I'm not disagreeing with what you guys are saying, I, I think the ordinance, you know, does address it. It's just not followed through.
I, and, and the last comment I have, because we're reviewing the policy, I like everything that was put in for the dog park. Looks good, I, I wouldn't, no, no recommendations for.
One question.
John, hold on, hold on.
Do we have, uh, dogs have to have all their vaccinations for that park?
They're.
They're being found, they are.
For up, up here?
Yeah.
When you look at the rules that are posted up there, have to be registered, have to have all their shots.
Okay, but how do you, how do you administer that, don't you administer it through the registration? Yeah, so they have to be registered.
I didn't see the mention of a kennel cow, does it have any of the regulations?
But, you know, the, you know, who's going to, who's going to monitor, do you have all the shots?
They're taking that risk, there's a risk sign, I mean, we're not going to monitor for kennel cows, for crying out loud.
Right, right, so as long as they're, as long as they have their registration tag.
If you want to take your donkey up there, it'll be fine.
We're good, we're good, your donkey, kennel cow, it doesn't have kennel cow.
I don't think we're getting that deep in.
All right, let's keep going.
Yeah.
Now.
So.
Yet, at least.
I don't know, we have a consensus that we, we'd like to move forward with the, not we, you guys, because I refuse myself from this, but the board would like to move forward with the dog park additions, but hold off on number ten at this point in time.
You see, it's good, if you need it.
You can put it back in.
And there's a process, if we put it back in, we know we need to do public hearings and, and everything else, but I don't know if.
Well, we have to do public hearings now, yeah.
Because of the.
We're changing.
Because of the, because of the change in the dog.
Any change.
But, but I'm, I'm saying, yeah, the dog park change, I'm not overly concerned, we're going to get a bunch of.
Oh, no, 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 I agree.
But I, I don't believe in fairness to Brooke, I don't see, I don't believe she knew that our ordinance.
It's been set out already.
So do you leave it as is, as drafted here for the public hearing and then you'll get feedback on number ten as well as the dog park?
Sure, I mean, I don't have any problem.
Public hearing doesn't mean you need to leave ten in there, I don't know.
I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem if we, we leave it and, and say, here you go.
Come talk to me.
I also have, I have a problem with taking my hand, taking a hammer and just slamming it and seeing if it hurt. I think if you left Ken in there, that's exactly what's going to happen.
You're going to throw the landmine into the outfield and.
I'm just saying, how much pain, how much pain do we want to go through, board?
This, this hearing is, is scheduled for when?
Adam is scheduled.
Has been scheduled.
Okay.
So because I'm, I'm out of town, I actually set the agenda up already and it's printed and this is on that agenda.
Okay.
It's at the next meeting, October.
So the.
I think you're going to get plenty of people that think it's still in there at the next meeting anyway.
Better way to be here.
Yeah, so, and I don't think it's that difficult to explain that, what we're going to do.
But do you want the draft going to the public hearing to not include ten?
Yeah.
You want it just to include the dog park changes?
You want to leave.
I'm not, I'm not on the board. If I was on the board though, I would, I would say leave ten in because there will be some, some probably some family members that want to come in and say that I have children in the park.
Someone, right, it's already got enough traction.
Let's leave it in the discussion.
Already that even if we, we'd be talking about it anyway.
Yep.
I, I just hesitate to send Brooke a message leaving it in, supporting her request. And then at the, at the, at the public hearing, we say, well, we put it in there, none of us really think that it's necessary.
Well, see, that's where, that's where I'm coming from, I don't support the request, so I'll make real clear.
Right, so I just think we shouldn't send a mixed message.
You should move forward with what you want.
Yes.
And not leave it in there, just to leave it in there.
Right, because it, it will be far worse if we say, well, it's in there, but we don't support it.
Why get everyone all excited over something if what we feel is we want to take and enforce the ordinance that we have, then let's just say it and not go and get everyone all excited and upset and we, we've got enough.
I think that's a good point.
So Joe, I think your direction is to redraft it with only the dog park changes, take, take ten out and that will be part of the public hearing.
Put it off screen, you may have to use it someday, but.
The minutes from this meeting come out, if, if we're way off and there's a huge outcry from the parents, we're going to, we're going to know about it, but I agree with you, Rod, that it's, it shouldn't be what the board feels.
Correct.
Right.
Something forward that you don't want. Okay, um, budget review, show it for the package.
Moving into budget season for fiscal year, uh, to be very, very.
You were doing really well, Chris. You were doing really well, Chris.
Well.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't think the board hasn't had a chance to look at this, so this, I just wanted to give you a quick overview and then kind of tell you what's, what's new this year. I'm trying to improve my process. Um, so the budget in front of you, um, is sitting at a 2.51% increase. Uh, big things you'll see, uh, reserve accounts were funded again. Last year we took them up to, we took a few of them out, reduced them down so that way we could have a lower percentage increase just because it was a tough year. I did add those back thinking towards the future. Um, also at the back of the budget, you'll see I did add a $50,000 voter.
Behind that.
Back in.
Um. Hating.
Hating.
We have nothing behind that.
Um, also. Under town clerk, we do have a town clerk that's retiring. Um, I reduced that salary down to thirty seven.
Pull out, try to find it.
I don't have one.
You don't have that packet?
It was.
It was in on the table.
On the table in front of me.
You've got everything in front of me. Look there, man, let me see. Okay.
There it is.
I hit it. I thought it was in the package. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Very disruptive.
I did too. I blocked it out. That's why I got them.
Sorry, Joe. Okay, so town clerk is retiring. I did reduce that salary line down to thirty seven thousand. Uh, it was up over fifty, fifty thousand. Uh, and this brings us, this brings us closer in line with our neighbors, town clerks and our neighbors. Castleton's making thirty seven and change, Holm's forty one and change, and West Rockland's forty one and change.
But how long have they been there each?
Several years. It's not, they're not new clerks, so.
Okay, so thirty seven is, you know, your estimation of.
Entry level. Yeah.
How's, what's West Haven? They're part-time.
You know, I couldn't find West Haven in the, in the paper.
They're part-time and brand new. Just this year. You could extrapolate.
Um, in your, so in the little packet that was on your desk, there's also the DPW salaries. And this, this caused a consternation since I've been here because we distribute DPW salaries by percentage across the department. So summer work, winter work, cemeteries, transportation, all of those things. We take the lump sum of the DPW salaries and then break that out across all of those departments. So you'll see some, it's like, wow, that's up kind of high. And then you'll see another line, it's like, that's down kind of low.
I think that's a great spreadsheet.
That's, and those numbers, those numbers correlate exactly with what's in your budget, so it's.
It's just funny that they're not the same number. No, they're not.
What do you mean they're not the same number?
Five seventy-four and five sixty-eight? Grounding?
Oh, yeah, rounding. There is a rounding here. Um, and then finally, so, um, at the, I think it was an August meeting, um, I asked the board, hey, what do you guys want to see? Um, and there's always, you, there's always dispute about what the budget looks like. What I did take away from that conversation was, was you know, be honest with your budget, which we always are. This time, what you'll see in your budget is what's actually in the numbers in the spreadsheet is your base, I mean, that's bare bone stuff. If you start cutting, you're cutting into operation, your, our, our operating funds. What you'll see in this is what I'm calling the a la carte budget, um, is all the things, all the projects that are not in your budget. The things like picnic tables and crosswalk signs and extra paving and painting. So that way the board, it's, it's more transparent. You can see, hey, this is the cost to do these projects. And it's not buried in your budget somewhere. So these are the things we want. It's just, it's extra money and it will increase the budget. So on, on that sheet, you'll see the total cost of the project and then you'll see the percent increase added to this base budget. If that makes sense.
Do you, do you prioritize those in any way?
I, you know, I thought about color code down as a priority. If I had to choose one, I would say the faith, the, the face, the fence painting around the green. That, that fence is beautiful and it needs to be maintained. And then town hall is very expensive, but we've shoot out squirrels and I see birds poking out of the, out of the, flashing there, so. It's, it's been years of, of no maintenance and or lack of maintenance, so we're, we're just trying to get back to a better place.
Same with Scotch Hill paving.
Six percent extra on the budget, but that's.
Lack of maintenance for sure.
Yeah.
Well, when's the last time that road was paved?
It's been, it's been years.
Well, that's without a class two grant.
Right.
Isn't the plan to pave that if we get the grant, the class two grant, we shift and we pave all of Scotch Hill? If we don't get it, we do our regular roads.
Yes, um, that, that hundred and forty thousand, um, this is the gold standard road. Like you take the hundred and forty, the hundred and eighty-five in the budget, and we anticipate getting a class two this year. You take all that money.
And you put it.
Grind it down, put in some gravel if we have the money, pave it, top coat it, now you got a, now you got a road.
But that, does that include the shoulder, the, the shoulder and everything?
Not quite.
I don't know about the shoulder.
Okay, because that's, that's the problem we ran into up on, on Bolger.
Yeah.
Yeah, did everything but?
Yeah.
We forgot that.
So I hope this helps kind of just make, you know, clarify what, what we want and then I hope it helps make the decision making easier.
And as I'm looking at this, you know, the paving schedule we had for this year that we didn't do, that's back in and I'm going to, is it? It's all back in here?
No, we're trying to hit that in the spring.
We're going to do that.
Current budget before the end of June.
Yeah, so what's, what's in our budget now? We'll, we'll spend that money before July first and pave it.
July first, so this is additional paving. The only reason, I'm trying to answer the question because of Fourth Street, because it was a class, was it class two? And we were only going to be able to do some shimmying or whatever they call that on the sides. Is, is there some opportunity to get Fourth Street completely done? Next year.
Could you combine it with a June-July, two, two years?
Instead of, see, I, instead of just shimmying, I mean.
Where do we?
I, because I look, Fourth Street gets a ton of traffic. And shimmying was the best we could do with the money we had, but is there, do we have some, that, that would be the only.
I think if you added that as another item here.
That's the only thing I've, I've saved so that if they haven't got time to think it over, put some numbers, I don't want to blindside them when he does it, but that would be a question right now.
I, I will ask Aaron and we can get numbers. I know we hesitate to do class two paving just with town money because there is class two grants that come out and we have to wait for it, but.
If we wait like Scotch Hill and to where there isn't a road left, that is the only thing I'm concerned about that. But that's just, that's very important, because I think this is great and it gives, gives us a lot of pre-work. So that we can get there. This is very good. I just don't, as much information as we can give you as possible for.
So I got a question. This little spreadsheet, a great, great spreadsheet, whatever number you use, the five seventy-four, the five sixty-eight.
Messing with you. For the record, it's like three dollars different.
Yeah, but I. Is there a way that you can reasonably, I identify in the budget with an asterisk or, you know, I don't know how you do it, color? All of the line items that the, the labor is in. Okay, because this, this two eighty-one is spread over a lot of line items. So the, the issues every year is always been, you know, when you add up all, because it's, well, this is a five-year average for this line item. Okay, and when you add up all of the, the labor line items, it always seems to be way more than.
I think that's what you're saying though, is those are the numbers out of here.
The, the green numbers are the numbers that are in your budget. We, we did reduce, so there was, we did reduce water sewers, so you'll see that money is not in this budget, that money is out, you know, in two different budgets. So there is more, but it's a different budget.
Okay. Okay.
I'm trying to make this one as clear as possible too. This, this is hard.
The wages get harder when they're divided by the three.
It is, and they change sometimes dramatically over the years.
See, I still think we should have one labor budget line item and all those line items that we have labor in right now.
Yeah.
Are zero that and Jenny puts actuals against them.
They're just allocation.
They're, they're allocations. And that way you, you, that's what I used to call the eighty-twenty rule. You put eighty-twenty, or twenty-eighty, twenty-eighty in the, uh, that's the number of hours in a year. And you put that in the line, uh, that line item. That's the bulk number. And the actuals are just there to give us an idea of what the trending is year over year. Because every year is, the, the summer work is a little bit heavier than the winter work for the winter work is depending on the, the winter that we had. And the only thing that we argue about or discuss or debate is overtime. And that's it. I mean, there is no discussion at all about the.
Because it's contracted.
It's contracted labor and, and there's, we know that there's twenty, two thousand and eighty hours in a year. That's it. There's no discussion, except for, I'm sorry, the part timers, the, the nine hundred and sixty and four, four hundred and eighty hours. But, you know, you have this spreadsheet to, to support the number and this is where we come up with and that's it.
So the game plan is our next meeting, we'll be doing DPW?
Yep, so I'll, I'll produce another, another schedule. The next meeting is the entire DPW budget, which is only like.
I was just going by.
Yeah.
The sheet you gave us that said it's going to happen and that must be.
And will we have the updated capital plan for them?
Yes, we didn't, we didn't get that completed in time for this meeting, but, um, Aaron is working it up. He's working on it today. In fact, that's coming.
And will that?
There was something else. Yes.
Will that include like culverts and some of that stuff or not yet? Like culvert?
I would say no.
I was hoping culverts on everything that, anything you wanted to pave, costs associated with underneath.
I'm, I'm still going to say no, but we'll try. If, that's a lie. If you say underneath, then you're talking like water and sewer and culverts and, and catch basins.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. If you want to put three quarters of a million dollars into paving next year, you should know what's underneath it.
Sure.
But that's just me.
Other questions? Joe, anything else?
No, I think that was it.
I, I like it though. Good presentation.
Parking lot, anything there?
Only the tax stable, the EDC finalized the tax stabilization, so we will get some documents.
Next one.
Next one.
Uh, board roundtable?
On September eleventh, I was parked across the street for something, going through the park. And I, I made this whole story up in my head, but there was a car there with New York license plates and there were a couple middle-aged men outside that had on, uh, New York Fire shirts. And they were taking pictures and looking at, um, the monument that we have outside, the piece of the World Trade Center. And I just thought it was really kind of sweet, made me cry. But for all I know, they could have been going to Shaws from White Hill. I don't know, but it seemed, it seemed like more than that, you know? So it was nice. That's it.
Anything else?
It was nice.
Jeff, uh, review finance reports?
I'll write that down. Oh, hang on. Hi, Brooke.
Who's new? She's new at this.
I'm apparently new at it. You just gave me those. Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeff to pay the payroll warrant, um, seconded by Glenn. Questions on that? All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries?
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, one hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and four cents.
Second.
That includes some, some purchases.
Each purchase, yeah.
Ditch box, eighteen-five, pump station one, twenty thousand, eight hundred, pump station two upgrade, uh, twenty, twenty-one thousand, five hundred. And Veemer's insurance payment, retirement.
Retirement.
Retirement, thirty-seven thousand.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the, um, general fund warrant. Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
I.
Motion carries? Uh, checkbook status?
I hesitate again to read this into the minutes, but it's, it's negative one million, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents. And that is not an accurate representation of where, what our checkbook balance is.
The money is printed.
Your transfer.
Yeah, because due due from other funds is one point six million.
Jenny, I talked to Jenny today, yesterday about it. And she said we have over four million dollars sitting in the bank. It's just a matter of moving the money.
Well, we have some stuff that's in her absence and stuff got entered differently. And there's some paper shrink here.